For the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. Mr. Bailey, Mr. O'Tremba.
O'Tremba?
There you go. Gotta help you out.
It's a hard one. It's a hard one, but get used to it.
I'll get used to it. So, thank you guys for being here today. We'll get right into this. Yes.
Forgot to say, but I think there's some kind of announcement that you need to say at the beginning now that we're recording. When you open the meeting.
Is there?
Yeah. I think so. Just say that we're announcing it and then we'll get your verbiage put into the.
Okay. This, this meeting is being recorded.
There you go. That's good.
Just so you know, that was required by law, what started with this month, correct?
Yep, still iron.
And I put a similar statement in the chat.
I said it.
Did you? Perfect. Okay. Moving on, 4.01. Uh, this is the point in the meeting for comments on matters not already on the agenda. Comments on agenda items will be accepted. When that item comes up during the meeting, interested persons may also submit views in written form to the clerk or superintendent prior to the meeting, and those comments will be brought to the attention of the court during the meeting. Do we have any public participation or correspondence? Perfect. We have no presentations, so we'll move on to 6.01, Consent Agenda.
I move the Colstrip Public Schools Board of Trustees approves a consent agenda as presented.
Second. Okay, have a motion in a second with that. I'll move right to the vote. Wait.
Aye.
Tiff?
Aye.
Angie?
Aye.
Sabrina?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on. You guys will notice that there's something missing in this agenda. We'll talk about that again. Uh, governance calendar, I don't.
They won't let any of us in.
Really?
Just to the.
Nope, can't access that.
On the government's calendar.
I, I will send you a link for that. That was moved today, and I apologize to the thing that you'd be looking at tonight. This is for all.
Every board meeting.
Okay.
I have that printed here.
Is there anything on there?
Oh, yeah, you got it, yep.
July. Oh, all the handbooks are in July.
But we don't have any of them, right?
We moved them to August.
Okay.
We moved them to August?
We did.
Yeah.
Yeah, give me a chance to review them. I think was the main thing, the writing.
Okay.
We met Wednesday, so.
Okay.
And we have to schedule a budget hearing date. Are we gonna do that in August as well?
The budget meeting is the first August meeting, so I did do a publication for the newspaper, which is what I have to do, but I didn't know. I looked back and I didn't see like a motion where we actually set one, we just talked about it, I think.
Okay.
So I have it set to do it that first board meeting. Okay.
And transportation permissions is the only other thing.
Just tonight, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're good.
Works. We have the old business with that. We'll move right on into new business. Mrs. Danzel.
Okay, I am recommending Tara Anderson for math for high school. I've tried to get Tara here for years. She has taught in several schools, started out as a science teacher and is now a math teacher. And I love that she can help kids make that connection between science and math. So, um, has lots of experience and great classroom management.
Where's she going from?
Um, she lives in Forsyth.
Okay.
She taught in Miles City and Melstone, but she spent most of her career in Forsyth, so.
I move that the Colstrip Public Schools Board of Trustees approves hiring Tara Anderson for a certified teacher position for the 24-25 school year.
Second.
Okay, have a motion in a second. Any public comment on this agenda item? Any for the board? Wait.
Aye.
Tiff?
Aye.
Angie?
Aye.
Sabrina?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
9.02, FFA out-of-state travel request. Andrew's not here.
Is anyone here?
Not Andrew, we're trying to be online.
Uh, he is online.
Is he?
Yep. Do you have a slideshow?
Well, Angie said she kept being muted last time.
Yeah, I talk and it goes, someone is muting you. I'm like, you know, what are you doing? She'd be going, Angie, someone is muting you.
You couldn't see us in the back all over.
Can you pull up this?
No. Yeah, I can. So Andrew just sent a chat message, came aboard here, but we're not.
Trying to sound like the chat was a piece.
Well, it looks like my computer's sound is working. Should I just come over and get your screens or? Hey, let's, let's try it now. Now it's set to pulling up.
Can you hear us, Andrew?
Okay. How about by calling, putting on speakerphone?
Okay.
We can hear you. Hey, Andrew, I'm just gonna put you on speakerphone, is that okay? All right, okay, hang on. There we go. Okay, can you, you'll have to talk about.
That's not hard for me to do. So I sent a slideshow, can everybody on the board?
No.
Evan's opening it right now, hang on just a sec.
Okay.
Almost there.
I don't think we have it.
I don't have it.
Well, I don't want to miss the job until.
Do you want me to just play it from my computer and flip it around?
Yeah, if you, if you can. I just sent the link to you guys, you should get an email. Looks like we're having some sharing issues with that site, because you are, there's many members of it. So when you get the email, let me know if you can open that week.
I can open it.
You can open it, good.
Yeah. Okay, maybe you can just talk about, I'll go through it.
Yeah, go ahead, Andrew.
Andrew, they have it open on their own computers, so go ahead.
Okay. Uh, I'm not sure if formatting was an issue with it or not, but, uh, so those of you that haven't met me, you probably don't see my face, I'm Andrew Farrick. I am the high school teacher and FFA advisor for the Colstrip FFA chapter, and I am requesting permission to take members of the FFA chapter to National FFA Convention in Indianapolis, Indiana. Uh, it says Nashville on the agenda, but that is just a stop on our trip. So I had a presentation made, just kinda going over everything and what the plan was for the trip that we had come up with. And I had help with other act teachers coming up with some stuff too. Uh, so to start, it was essentially, what is National FFA Convention? Uh, it is the largest FFA event in the nation with nearly 70,000 FFA members from across the country gathering to celebrate the FFA values of peer leadership, personal growth, and career success through agricultural education. When is National FFA Convention? It is held at the end of October or the beginning of November each year. Uh, this year it is October 23rd through the 26th, again, in Indianapolis. Uh, the main thing of who is traveling to convention, from CHS, there will be six students, myself, and then I got, I got some confirmation today that dual database report will be by a female adult chaperone. But we are not traveling by ourselves, we are traveling with two other chapters that we're hoping to, that being the Broadwater FFA chapter in Townsend and the Free Force FFA chapter in Free Force. The reason those two chapters were chosen is because of the relationship that I have with them, even though they are far away. I came from Townsend originally, so the advisor there is the act teacher that I have from out of the technical, and the advisor in Free Force is one of my closest friends. Uh, so I know them really well, uh, and they know me, and it's just an easy way to work together with that familiarity with going to a giant convention and event such as Nationals. I asked a couple of students to answer two questions. Why did they want to travel National FFA Convention? And what did they hope to gain from the opportunity to attend Nationals? And they essentially said that they wanted to build their experience in FFA for themselves as well as the team, and then learn more about agriculture as they grow. And they wanted to just get that full experience. I had two students answer my testimonial questions, that one is in the yellow, one's in the green. Uh, and they just wanted to expand their FFA knowledge, see something outside of Montana, and they are very excited to have the opportunity to try to go to National Convention, because they've loved every in-state event so far, so they're looking forward to Nationals. Uh, what we'll be doing, National Convention itself is action-packed, there's a bunch of, uh, things going on as far as like a career show that is just as big as, is way bigger than the gym, um, it is a very, very huge trade show. Uh, there's college opportunities, uh, there's also sessions held inside the consulting stadium that are facilitated by National FFA officers. So there is guest speakers, awards, all of those things at the convention that the Nationals, the National Officers help facilitate. And I just have a few pictures of the National Officer team and just a couple of glimpses of what those events look like at convention on those slides. Not only that, I had in the proposal to, to the board that we would be going the 21st through the 27th, with National Convention being the 23rd through the 26th. So that would mean that we have some other opportunities with Broadwater and Free Force set up that we would go to, from, fly on from Bozeman to Nashville, then in Nashville we would go see the Country Music Hall of Fame, and then do a lot, uh, let's see, I can't remember the name of it, the Lost Cave Tour, Lost River Cave Tour, that's what it is. But then we would travel from Nashville to Louisville, Kentucky, uh, which is in between there in Indianapolis, and we would go on a couple of tours, like the Louisville Slugger Museum and the Kentucky Derby Museum. So there's more activities for students to do besides just see, or just National Convention. And then throughout convention, one of the chaperones from Townsend, he is a hog producer, and those other hog producers in the area, and was hoping to set up some tours of facilities for us as the entire group to go to, so they still get some agriculture touring, and they can learn some stuff about animal agriculture in Indianapolis. We have chosen to fly in years past, I think, because they can't tell from just on our bus with other chapters, uh, but I think it was just a little bit easier and faster for flight. Uh, so we would fly out of Bozeman on Monday, October 21st at 1:15. So we would have to leave the school around 6:30 to make it to Bozeman with enough time to go through the pre-check, all of that stuff for the flight. Then we would have a layover in Salt Lake City before arriving in Nashville. After we get to Nashville, we would do rental cars and drive from there to Indianapolis. And then at the end of the week, we would fly from Indianapolis back to Nashville, or we would drive back to Nashville from Indianapolis, excuse me, and then do a flight back to Bozeman. It'll arrive on 26th around 11:05 P.M. Uh, just going through some hotel costs for National Convention, uh, there's the two costs for Nashville and for Louisville, there would be a one-night stay at each. It would run a total for Colstrip FFA at around $280 in Nashville and $450 rounding up in Louisville. Uh, all of the numbers for hotels and costs have been made off of the figure of 27 people, that is how many would be traveling to convention, eight from Colstrip, nine from Townsend, and 10 from Free Force. And we just, and took the total cost and divided by 27 individuals, so that is what it would be per person, and then what the total would be for our eight people. There's the hotel costs for Indianapolis, and then again, in Bozeman, uh, in Indianapolis it would be a three-night stay, uh, and a total around $1,300, rounding down just a tad. And then in Bozeman, because we get in so late, I figured it would be safer and better, instead of trying to drive four hours to Colstrip at midnight, we would stay in Bozeman, and that would be $99 for room per night, it would be a one-night stay, it'd be a $400 total for that. And, but it's a lot safer than trying to drive four hours, um, after just getting off, we're flying for a long train. So our total cost, I have everything listed, we included in some convention registration, and then the rental car fee, and the, uh, next week the rate for long-term parking at Bozeman and Yellowstone International Airport, and the total cost would bring us to just shy of $11,000, at $10,879. Uh, the spreadsheet that was sent to you, the hotel costs are a little bit, or the flight costs are a little bit different to Nashville. They made it up from $216 round trip to around $258 round trip, and that was just the change that was made about two days ago. So those prices are a little bit adjusted on the presentation versus what is on the Excel spreadsheet. Uh, how will we raise the money? We plan to work concessions of both football and volleyball games, we have a FFA hot raffle in the works, I'm still needing to get the paperwork finished for that, but we have ideas rolling. We would go for sponsorships potentially and grants that we could find, as well as any other yearly fundraiser that we would do as the FFA chapter to raise that money. Uh, thank you very much for listening to the presentation. Are there any questions from the board?
How much have you raised so far, Andrew?
Uh, so far we have had, uh, numbers from the Wiltley Buffalo Rifle Shoot, and I have not gotten a total from that yet, as Brenda, Emma, Ken, and I have worked together, but we have since parted ways. I have come home to help Kanes season this summer, so I haven't been able to sit down and see the total number as heard yet.
We also talked about the students will have some responsibility for cost, correct?
Yes, I would, I'd want the students to pay, or at least half of their total, um, sum of cost, and they can do that through payments, and that's not a big issue, um, just as long as we get the money and pay that to the chapter. Uh, and I hope to have them in like four payments, and that would cover airfare for them, as well as some of their meals. And I am encouraging them all to bring money for meals, just on the off chance that we don't have enough time to sit down and the, we don't have the credit cards for the chapter to provide a meal for all of us.
I would have liked to have seen one of your FFA members here tonight.
I, I decided to get them to come, but they all had different things going on with work and whatnot. Um, it's also a little bit tough, and I'm putting that on myself, for not being there in person, I would have liked to have done so. But it was a little bit hard to get home today for the meeting versus, if it were in August, but just because it was a long drive, and you, you came season, I was needed here quite extensively. But I, I do wish I would have been there myself with some FFA members, that is why I was so much trouble as well.
I think it just shows them the importance and responsibility, gives them a little bit of, um, public speaking if they have to come before the board.
Right, and I agree with that. I think after the presentation is approved, that they, we've definitely heard with the members that came.
Oh, it is, but we should have helped, we should have held this till August then. So then, I think that's important, is they need to make their reservations. Well, I think if it was that important to them, they probably should have showed up. Because I think going to Nationals is, is an amazing thing for FFA members. I think it's an amazing experience. But not having anyone here from the club to represent and speak on behalf of the club, personally, for my personal, like we, I was in FFA. We had to go to the board. If you didn't go to the board, all of us had to go. And if you weren't there representing your club, you didn't get to go. And not all of us spoke, but we all had to stand up there. That's my personal opinion. It's just very disappointing when kids are asking for a $10,000 trip, not that we have to pay for it. But no one is being represented. It doesn't, to me, it doesn't teach them anything. That's just my personal opinion. The, the trip is amazing. The trip is an amazing opportunity for these kids, but not having them come here to have any sort of responsibility, I would like to see them come before the board.
We'll have them give us that presentation when they get back.
I want them to come and ask.
Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you.
I know July is a tough one, but put it off till August then, or if it was so important to them, they should have been here to ask for it.
I don't disagree.
That would be close to the 45 days prior to impending travel. I mean, if.
If we did on this eighth meeting, it wouldn't.
Yeah.
Or the 12th, sorry. That's 56, seven times, 10 is 70. Seven times, 10 weeks, yeah, 70 is a week. I'm not, I mean, I think the trip is amazing, but I also think the kids should have a little bit of responsibility in coming to ask for it. And I feel like it also, I'm sorry if your airfare goes up, you should have probably been here. I mean, I would make damn sure my kid was there, they were asking for money, or asking for a trip to go out of state and spend a week away from school.
Could you possibly approve pending them presenting at the August meeting?
I'll entertain any motion at this point, so. I'm okay with it. I, I agree, you're, you're not wrong at all.
Yeah.
If it's a matter of just getting this done for them, and then they can present to us when they come back, I'm okay with that too. I do agree they should, somebody should have been here to talk about that. I know.
No, I'm not saying Mr. Farrick, I mean, he's got.
Things get crazy.
Yeah, I totally sympathize with that, but some of his kids should have taken the initiative to have been here. I, I would say I move to approve the national, or the FFA, sorry, I move to approve out-of-state travel request for the Colstrip High School FFA, pending member, members coming to the August. Let me get the date right, sorry. Pending members coming to the August 12th board meeting to request the travel in person.
One second.
Okay, have a motion in a second. Any public comment on this agenda item? Any for the board? Wait.
Aye.
Tiff?
Aye.
Angie?
Aye.
Sabrina?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. That's what we'll do. 9.03.
All right, okay, thank you.
You're up, Scott, I'm up. Yeah, I will say I had a nice talk with Andrew, right, when he was leaving, he stopped by and, and I, um, I didn't know enough to ask him to bring somebody tonight, but I did ask him to bring somebody to present, and he said they were gonna plan on that. I've seen so many presentations on the Nationals, it is, like you said, amazing.
Oh, it's awesome.
It's a great thing for kids, for those who aren't familiar with it, so I was pretty excited to see that goes on here. Okay, so curriculum director discussion, I've had, um.
Oh, you're. 9.03.
My shared duties, okay, so what, what am I, what do you need me to cover on that one? Sorry.
Looks like your title.
I just jumped, okay.
Just who you're assigning.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that, I jumped to the next one. Okay, so. The following are the ministry of duties and assignment superintendent for 24-25 school year, title nine coordinators, Alicia O'Toole and Bart Bailey. Got it right? And that was the only ones that we did today, yep. Okay, so we just need the board to approve those, correct?
I don't think so.
I don't need, we don't need approval of those assignments, those are your, sorry.
Yep.
Just for.
Information.
Okay, yeah, it's, I'm sorry, missed out there.
Thank you both for taking that on, appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Thanks, thanks, Mr. Bailey.
As he's going, oh.
People get a lot of those things, right?
Yeah. What else can be given?
It's hard if nobody around those things, so.
With that, we'll move on to 9.04. Discussion on curriculum director position. Don't speak.
Are you up again? Is it you again?
I don't know, I, I. I was just waiting, he called up this time, told what number, I was checking him off, see, I got pretty excited about FFA there. Now that has come up, um, so I know we're advertising, um, so there's been some discussion come my way about, um, that position and just all that it, it does, or would do. So I know we got job descriptions that were printed out. So I know we got job descriptions that were printed out for, for the board to take a look at. I touched base with, I did talk to all the principals and Jennifer over the last, just since probably Friday, um, maybe Thursday, but anyway. Um, there were, I think just in the description, you'd kind of see the different hats that they wear. I know grants is a big part of the job. K-12 curriculum alignment is big. Uh, we've got reading coming up with the textbook. They do, they have textbook adoptions. Keeping track of all that, um, getting samples in, heading it up committees with the different schools and making sure that they're all vertically aligned, which can be kind of a long process, and I don't think this district's gone through vertical alignment formally for a while. So that is something that, what I'm feeling is rather pressing from what I've been hearing too from, from principals, other folks, but to make sure that that's done and done correctly. Professional development, a lot of times your, your, uh, your curriculum director really heads that up and makes sure it's getting that kind of alliance with our needs. And, and they're seeing overseeing what the, the IFs are doing and making sure that, um, we have mentorship programs going and that they're getting that curriculum to the teachers and they're working with the teachers. So I know as I talked to the principals, I know they all felt a, a need for that, uh, position to still happen right now. We're just, we're in the process of advertising, got a couple of applicants. But I guess I've also said, I want to make sure we have some really good applicants, um, before we go ahead and, and interview. So that's kind of where we're at right now. Yeah, I think grants is a big part of it that is difficult and can be really challenging and something we gotta make sure we really do a good job with to make sure that, um, title monies and all of those are, are handled correctly. But the curriculum itself, I think it's kind of the heart and soul of the school and to have somebody that can tie that together with the principals, with me, um, carry out those duties and work with the teachers. I think it can be, you know, an extremely important position that, um, I've been in a district that kind of went without. And it was really difficult when it came to adopting curriculums and kind of having the continuity and even the process of procedures followed correctly, um, that should be in place for a district. So I know there's been some talk about possibilities of maybe IFs carrying that if needed. And, you know, there's been some how to spread that out amongst them, so that, that is another option. But we are required to have at least a part-time curriculum. I think we were told it could be called a curriculum coordinator. Does state, um, from, from, from Monta that we must, districts must with fewer than 100 FT, which we are licensed staff and no full-time. Curriculum coordinator, if we were to go without one, shall employ the services of a consortium, multi-district collaborative or inter-local cooperative or a part-time designated coordinator. And Brittany's done a little bit of work with this consortium might need how to employ that. Uh, not a lot, so we haven't checked a whole lot into that, um, except just barely getting feet on the ground. But that could be a little bit, um, difficult, a little bit challenging to do that through a consortium. Not impossible, but, um, would take a little bit more work, maybe having somebody who would head all that up and probably work directly with me for sure this first year and making sure these things are all getting done and getting done properly, so.
What does it cost financially, Brittany? Do you know? To go through the?
I don't know.
What would that look like? Just.
I don't think any of us really know what that looks like.
All I know is when we were, yeah, when we were looking at the sped, there was just a lot of rules to it. We had to know a year in advance. Which I don't know if that's the same if we were to do a cooperative, if that's the same.
Okay.
But we would have had to know a year advance, plus we had to commit to at least two years. I can't remember.
Okay.
But, um, so I don't know if that's something.
I think the right person in place, I think we.
Yeah, cause there's a lot of teacher concern. This has been a hot item on my response. They feel like there are too many layers. We got instructional facilitator, we got a, a building principal, we got this person, and now we have a superintendent. Everybody's kind of giving us different information. And they're feeling like the position is more damaging than beneficial at this point. So I don't know how we better maybe define those roles, and I haven't talked to administrators about it at all. But I know the teachers are frustrated with, with all of the moving parts of it. So I don't, I don't know how to make it better. I'm not in the district, but I think it, it, we really need to maybe define these roles better. What is the instructional facilitator's job in that? What is the administrator's job in that? When does this curriculum person come in? Um, the buildings feel like, I mean, the staff, I don't, I haven't talked to admin, but they feel like they're, they're scheduling their own testing. They already have all these things in place and now we have this other person coming in. So I think it's just too many moving parts for them. That's what I'm hearing. They're frustrated with, they don't, they don't know who to answer to. And they're getting a lot of different input. So I think if we, if this position does come about, I, I just don't know how, and that'd be something I think admin, obviously, and you could sit down and just figure out what is everybody's real role? What is their, so teachers aren't so frustrated with it. My feed, some of the things that, just different feedback that I've heard as well is that a lot of teachers are, um, doing their own curriculum, like ACE or something along of those lines. And so they already have things in place for their classrooms, and so they're like, what, what would that do? Cause we already have this, this, and this. So it's kind of the same feedback that they're doing. The thing, and they, and the one thing though that has been unanimous is that everybody wants to vertically align. So that when you go to, you know, kindergarten knows what to expect for first grade, first knows what, and so on, all the way up. Because they're getting kids that are coming in to grade level four that can't do kindergarten work. So that is another, um, feedback thing that I've heard.
Well, I don't know where the district's at with grading either, but a lot of times they, they, they are kind of the catalyst for, um, grading professional development and grading consistency across the district. So I guess I've seen it work that way too, where they get involved in that. As far as the layers, I get that, you know, I, if the structure like you were saying, Angie's in place where the IF is truly their coach and helping them bring in what that director has worked with the committees on as far as what should be implemented, what, and are those curriculums that you're saying they have, are they aligned? You know, they should be oversee that. They don't really, I wouldn't say answer to a curriculum director. The curriculum director should be, answer to the principals and then working with the admin team to carry that out.
In the past, they've been answering to all. So I think that, I think it's just maybe.
I see what you're saying.
I think it's just maybe better defining. And does the person have to have a degree? I don't, this is the other, do they have to have a degree in curriculum? Or are we, I know the job says, the description says to write either admin or, um, curriculum. Is that what it said? Okay, that was another question I got asked was what is the job qualification?
I think it might be good to revamp this whole job description. And then it would make us all feel a little bit better about going into something like that. Because with your background in curriculum, I think you can look at this and see, you know, what can be removed or what they shouldn't be doing. Also, maybe not, maybe it's not a director, maybe it's a coordinator. And maybe that would remove some of that at the rotative level. And then they're there to like coach and help curriculum, but they answer to the admin staff instead of being an additional admin.
And maybe that's a conversation with the admin, cause I have, I have a thought here. This is input. I've just been hearing all. And I think it's, it's at this point, um, frustrating. I mean, that's what I'm hearing. I don't, and I don't know how to, and I don't know how to make it better, so that's. But I think.
Maybe as an admin team, if you guys looked at this and maybe came up with some better solutions.
That's where I kind of felt behind the eight balls, like, I'd really like to have my team together to go over all of that, so we try to touch base with all of them.
Put somebody in and then we realize it's still the same old frustration. You know what I'm saying?
Nobody wants that. Yeah, we want to build morale, and I was afraid of, if we didn't do it, we could be killing morale. Cause I know as a principal, how difficult that can be to do all those things that I just kind of randomly threw out and oversee. Plus you want your principals dealing with your parents and your kids.
And we don't want them to take this burden on, right? Or this without, but yeah, I just think there might be a better.
Coordinator before too, not now as an admin. I have worked with that actually last few years, so.
And I agree. I think the role needs to be defined very clearly.
Yeah.
There are things in my building that I know what's best for my kids and my teachers, and I want to make that decision. Um, but there are also things like we're missing those old alignment meetings, curriculum meetings. I was talking about this today.
And how long has it been since you've had one of those staff? I, I don't know about your building, but I mean, they were saying they don't remember some of them when they've actually had a meeting with this person and you. So I think those are just the gaps that need to be.
So I think if that's clearly lined out and like you're directing that person, you know, there does, it does help, I think, having one person in charge of curriculum adoption. Bringing in the samples, being in charge of that, and that person taking care of grants, that kind of thing.
Yes.
Yeah, so I think there's definitely a role there.
Coordinator, maybe a good, yeah, I do.
And I think the last time we had our alignment was when we had Joette.
Yeah, I mean, it's. So it's been a while.
And how much time did you devote to that? How long a process? Cause I've been, we, the lot, my past district, we went through two years of that.
It was, it was long. It wasn't just a simple one meeting and done. It was. We met monthly. We met in the summer. I remember doing summer things. We got paid for it.
Big initiative.
Yeah, it was.
Yeah, I, there's, there's value in this position. It's just it needs to be redefined and, and utilized so that there is value.
And we need to find the right person to do it.
Yeah, yeah.
It's gonna be an overnight thing.
Right, and I think, I think even what we have applicants, it doesn't mean we have to necessarily jump right in on one of those applicants either. We've, we've, we've got pretty good as a district of maintaining and getting through things without something until we found the right person.
Yeah.
I agree. I would agree. And, you know, there's, you know, and I, I, I better, I like, I like listening to the, to the admin, um, and you guys' thoughts on that. And I can see all of you.
Mr. Bailey, you have the.
Oh, thank you for asking me.
I mean, just been sitting there shaking his head. I'm like, all right, let's hear it.
Do you truly feel that this person is critical to exactly what we're talking about, the vertical alignment? And bringing the educational view of the district from one point? The issue comes with staff, and I have experienced this today, Hill. If we administrators, see, being a coach is a very sticky wicket. Because you can't be perceived as being in charge of them, which is what I'm hearing is happening. Which means that we principals have got to be in and be aware enough about what's going on in the classroom to main, let that coach maintain that relationship with that staff member. Then the principal has to be aware enough of what's going on in the classroom to play the heavy and enforce what needs to be done. Because that's where your contention's coming from, because they're, the teacher's feeling like this coach is constantly telling them what to do and is in charge of them. It's not the case. Coach is there to help them. It has to be a completely different relationship.
Yeah.
And that puts the onus on us to be in the classroom and know what's going on. In, in my curriculum role, I worked with the principals and I learned very quickly that you do have to, you know, get that, that principal-coach-teacher relationship is really sensitive. It is, it is a hard one to keep like it should. And it just takes work and it takes time on the principal's part to be in the classroom. And it's hard because principals are busy.
Right.
But you just have to, it has to be the priority, because the priority of what's happening in your school is what those kids are learning in the classroom. Nothing else is, I mean, you have to keep that as a priority. And that takes time for me to get out of my office, set stuff aside and be in the classroom. That's the only way it can happen and the only way it can work. And, and to yes, clarify those roles and what that means, yes, we need to do that as an head team. So that's my two cents for it. Yeah, I lost an instructional coach, a very good instructional coach over exactly this issue. So, yeah.
Well, I'm fine with moving forward with it. I mean, you guys are obviously putting a lot of thought and discussion into it, so.
Yeah.
And we have to have it. I mean, but.
We have to have a part-time.
Part-time or some, some role of it.
Or join a consultant.
Yeah, yeah.
I think with the admin team we have in place now with Scott and Bart and Alicia and Robin, that those four can bring, can bring an applicant to this board and say,
Right.
this is who we've all been here to do the job.
Bart's background and with Scott's background.
I'm confident you guys can do it. Now we just gotta find him.
I do, I do agree with changing the director word though.
I think it would help, yeah.
To, what did you call it? Advisor, curriculum advisor?
Coordinator.
Curriculum coordinator?
There's two ways to look at that too then, because it does change the salary. And then, um, but I think what we're more concerned about our teachers are is that it's not an administrative role.
Yeah.
Okay, so it kind of opens up to more people then too. But I also wonder about sometime along the line, whoever that person is, and what kind of training, what kind of PDA might need themselves just to know how to do the job. But we can look into that as far as if it goes coordinator direction then. That would help if from what you're saying, from what I'm hearing from the teachers.
I think it would too.
It, it does get blurry. I worked in one district years ago where it was admin and then I'm, I was a guidance counselor, so I listened to that person. But then my principal was kind of getting on me because I should have been listening to that, but they am. So just like what, what Bart was saying, it can get kind of messy and blurry. So then all of a sudden it was more coordinator, and then it was smooth because we didn't have that person saying to the teachers, you know, almost in an evaluative role, right? It was always at the direction of the principal that we worked with them.
And then it's building specific too, you know, yeah, more.
Well, Joette Speaks still lives here, and so she would, I mean, if, if she was the last one that was, I mean, there was actively.
Doing the verbal, yeah.
Yeah. She'd be a good resource as well.
Who was it?
Joette Speaks.
Joette's one that's done all the curriculum mapping, have it all on the website. She might come in and do some mentoring or.
I don't know if they've been trained through, like Carol Ann Tomlinson with her. Okay. But yeah, so I, I'm aware of like who trains in curriculum mapping and some of the people at the higher national level. We could work on that. It sounds like it needs to be done, so it could be an initiative that starts with.
Great, thanks. With that, will we move on to 9.05? Health insurance, MOU.
I think we are, um, good finally. The classified has agreed to, um, the board's proposal last time we met and still has certified. So I came up with an MOU. Look it over. If you guys saw anything that, um, you know, jumps out at you, let me know. We can edit it right here. If not, then it would be up for approval and we will go ahead and get past this.
I've seen it.
Uh, I would just like to say this is a huge win. I believe. I'm so excited about this, so.
I think it looks good.
I move that the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees approves the health insurance MOU for the 2425 school year as presented.
Second.
There's a little pep in that motion.
It's okay to celebrate, right?
Thank you guys for doing that.
Can you second that? I have a motion in second. Any public comment on this?
Just understand that the I A deduct. Um, just understand that the high deductible being paid for by the district could potentially put a new classified employee in that lower wage bracket, could push them off of their Medicaid. Medicaid, and so you may lose potential.
Any for the board? Angie.
Aye.
Tiff.
Aye.
Wade.
Aye.
Sabrina.
Aye.
Aye. Hi, 9.06. Mr. Dussold.
That's enthusiastic.
Well, now I'm really looking forward to it. So Terry and I have spent the last few days turning laps around Rosebud County, um, figuring out, uh, the new routes. We have got us down to three routes from four, um, putting more kids on the buses, and, you know, just trying to do things more economically. We've managed to shave, uh, sixty miles off of the total bus routes, um, and again, dropping an entire route. So what you see before you is our proposal for it, combining what was the old Garfield and speedy routes, and picking up at muddy cluster, shallow grounds, and then coming up through there. Uh, coming up through Lame Deer, um, Tony's Route, dropping off the majority of the in-town route, and basically she would absorb Dory, which is the Castle Rock kids. And then creating a separate, a completely separate, independent in-town route, where the driver would just pick up kids in town. If we did get a fourth driver, this opens up the possibility to have a bus going north. So we could get out of those cow tracks if we get a fourth bus driver, so.
You guys got the amended?
Yeah. We did send, because after, again, spending all day Friday, turning laps around town, you saw the suburban crews around town, we weren't.
Honestly, I thought it was Robin, anyway.
Well, we're, yeah, we're moving stuff forward, no. Yeah. Yeah, we did drive by your house a few times. Um, but yeah, we, we kind of had to adjust, again, trying to figure out who would pick up what and when, because with, with Frank Bratton starting earlier, starting first, we, we had to account for that. And that actually does make things somewhat easier, because we can drop those kids off and then pick up in-town kids, so, um, but yeah.
And you're going to that meeting next Tuesday?
In like ten days, yeah. Desert.
It's got you too, okay. We're on.
All right. Worked, you ever had cattle, you ever had cattle brand coffee?
I think I have. But I'll have it again. That's the only reason I said, if you can't go, I'll go. Okay, it might be arm wrestling without one.
We have two drivers right now?
We have three drivers.
Oh, we have three, okay.
Yeah, I tell everyone, and Ellen will be leaving, and we'll have to replace her, so. Like, everything will figure it out.
Yeah.
Okay.
I move that the Colstrip Board of Trustees approves the transportation routes for 2425 as presented.
Second.
I got Wade. Okay, you have a motion and second. Any public comment on this? Jim, item? Any for the board? Wade.
Aye.
Tiff.
Aye.
Angie.
Aye.
Sabrina.
Aye.
Aye. You're still up there, boss? Activities, athletics, bus driver MOU?
Aye. Um, so, submitted the MOU as we had discussed. Basically, it is changing the drive time to twenty-five dollars an hour. That include, would include pre and post-trip, I don't know, the pre-trip that they have to do with the bus and post-trip, anything that they're actively working with the bus. It doesn't make any changes to sit time or to rest time, which is their hotel time if they have it.
I think it's fair.
I think, yeah. And maybe we can, that'll help us track a few.
Activity users, yeah.
I move that the Colstrip Public Schools Board of Trustees approves the MOU to increase the wage for activity runs for the 2425, uh, school years presented.
Second.
Okay, motion and second. Any public comment on this, Jim, item?
Yes, as the, um, activity, their transportation secretary, I highly recommend you consider changing your sub wage as well, if you can, so that you can have subs that are willing to do it at P2. Whether that means they give the twelve fifty sit time and the seventeen fifty, which is the route that they normally get when they sub for a route.
What do they get right now?
Twelve fifty.
Just straight? Because the sub rate is not part of the.
The sub rate is not part of it.
Of the CBA?
I mean, I can't, it doesn't change anything about something, but it's just something to consider.
Right.
On the activities?
On the activities, yeah.
I don't see why we can, I, personally, I don't know why I wouldn't do the same thing for that sub.
Maybe we could get that on the next agenda then.
Yeah.
Because, like, so, we have a sub driver, I'm not going to name any names, but we have a sub driver that was a driver, and I'm sure he'll drive everything that you ask him to, but he's still going to get paid the twelve fifty.
He would.
With, yeah, with this MOU, if it comes to the subs, I, I, I just feel like it's the same responsibility, it should be the same, so we'll put that on, on our list.
When the sub route is, I think seventeen fifty, is that what you know for sure?
I think, I think that's right, seventeen fifty.
You know, citing that's less than a route driver, but just, you know.
We can, I'm sure we can do something with that, so. Any for the board? Wade.
Aye.
Tiff.
Aye.
Angie.
Aye.
Sabrina.
Aye.
Aye. Activity fees, gate fees.
So, um, is, you guys have already the, the new schedule for that stuff, and I think it, uh, raising the rates reflects, you know, the increase of everything. And I think it's fair, having talked with different athletic directors and looked at different districts and what they're charging, actually, we're still a barman compared to some. So, you know, it, it keeps it more in line with, with what everyone else is doing, and it helps us with, uh, you know, getting some money in, in athletics and activities. Because we have drained it, and we do want to continue to improve our facilities and our, you know, kid uniforms, and be able to provide for the kids the best experience and safest experience possible.
Sure.
So.
The activity all-session pass price, there's not like a senior pricing for that? Would we want to look at adding that? Because we have senior pricing for everything else. We've never had it, but I think it would be good to give the seniors a discount on the all-session pass too.
We, we can add that in there somewhere in the middle, say seventy-five? Okay. Um, um, do you want to type that in as a mandate or?
Yeah, we haven't made a motion, so we can just.
What is it right now?
Seniors don't have a special discount.
Right now, the all-session adult pass is a hundred dollars, actually, all adults.
I see.
Yeah, so, so seniors have. Seventy-five, I said.
Seventy-five, is that, yeah, I, I mean, I think that's.
Because they get the student rate for everything else. So it'd be nice, yeah, if they get that break from the. Yep, one twenty-five.
So seventy-five?
That's fair. Okay, I move the Colstrip Public Schools Board of Trustees approves the increase in fees for activity and gate fees the 2425 school year as presented and amended.
Second.
Okay, motion and second. Any public comment on this? Any for the board? Wade.
Aye.
Tiff.
Aye.
Angie.
Aye.
Sabrina.
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Stewart.
All right, we have technology obsolete items. This is an update my summer help has been working on since the previous one you, um, I think it was made when you approved the first round of the list. So this was just the still extra stuff that didn't make it on that first round. So, uh, if you have any questions for it, this is all stuff that's been sitting in the tech room or hiding in different storage areas for, I don't know, two years plus or more. So there's nothing on here that we've pulled out of classrooms that were, that was in use this year. It is, it is all stuff that's just been found, uh, hide away in a closet somewhere. I, I put it on here as a second one, because there's a chance that if we can get this one posted to the, in the newspaper for the fourteen-day period, um, Yellowstone, you waste out of Billings is, uh, they do a, a summer run for schools for free. And they come down here on July twenty-sixth, so that would be like, it's pretty, I'd definitely have to get this one approved. But if, that's why I put it on here, because if we can this week get it out there, it's possible we can get, uh, free removal of the stuff if we can have it released, but. But if, if we miss it due to the newspaper posting, we'll figure out some other way to get it up to Yellowstone.
So if this gets approved, you're going to go ahead and get that posted right away tomorrow?
Chris does the posting.
Yeah, I was going to talk with Brittany about that, if we can do that, since Chris is out, um, we'll, I need to follow up. We got the other one posted, I don't know if that got done before Chris.
They publish on Wednesdays, and I think you have to have the information to the newspaper the Friday before, so we kind of, we just missed the cutoff to get this on there.
That's all right. Um, it'd still be good, because I have, uh, we'll just be able to move on it whenever, look, if it gets approved, and we just get it out, that's again. And this won't be the last one, but maybe for the next two months, this will be the last one. There's still about half a group of stuff that needs to be cleared out, so.
Thanks for doing this.
Yep.
Yes. I move that the Colstrip Public Schools Board of Trustees approves the disposal of the obsolete inventory items presented as per policy seventy-two fifty-one, dispose of school district property out of vote as presented.
Second.
Okay, motion and second. Any public comment on this? Any for the board?
So are you guys going to get it posted?
Yeah.
Like the ni, okay.
I'll work on it.
And was the last list posted?
I'll check with Chris.
Okay.
I'm not sure. She usually does, so let me look with her, and then if not, we'll make sure I get them all done, yeah.
Students, okay, cool.
That works. Wade, aye. Tiff.
Aye.
Angie.
Aye.
Sabrina.
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Nine-ten. FP fourteen.
Okay, so when Brittany was going through the minutes and comparing them to the lists for the letters, um, there were like a group of twenty students that we had discussed that their, um, student numbers did not make it to the list that I read, so we just have to add these to make them official. They were already discussed. They were already approved. Unless anyone feels like we need to go.
So these are approved to come in, or what, say that again, okay.
Yeah, yeah, and we had already discussed that.
Yeah.
Unless anyone feels like we need to go into executive such, such and discuss, it'll just be making it.
These were empty now, so.
Right.
Official.
We just need to get them on there.
Okay.
Okay, so I move the Colstrip Board of Trustees approve the FP fourteen student attendance agreements as presented for the twenty-four twenty-five school year. And we have student application numbers, three eighty-six, three ninety-four, four oh four, four oh five, four oh eight, four oh nine, four ten, four eleven, four fourteen, four sixteen, four eighteen, four nineteen, four twenty, four twenty-one, four twenty-two, four twenty-three, four twenty-four, four twenty-five, four twenty-six, four twenty-eight, and four twenty-nine.
Second.
Okay, motion and second. Uh, with that, I'll go, any further board discussion? Like I said, these were just clerical, basically, so. Wade.
Aye.
Tiff.
Aye.
Angie.
Aye.
Sabrina.
Aye.
Aye.
Stewart.
Ms. Lemon, you're up.
Okay, so we've had a super interesting, uh, time with this IV CLC sale. Um, we've been working with our attorneys and the title company to put together the warranty deed. Um, however, the deed that we are finding right now lists Rosebud County as the owner. Um, I've done some research, and I've plotted maps, and school district nineteen owns the middle school. Um, according to the Montana Cadastral, we also own Isabelbills, um, but Rosebud County owns Pine Butte. And then Colstrip is just list, the high school is just listed as school. So I've been contacting, um, I contacted the Rosebud County Treasurer. They list Colstrip School District nineteen as the owner of Isabelbills. The city of Colstrip also lists Colstrip District nineteen as the owner. Um, we cannot find a deed from Rosebud County to Colstrip District nineteen. Um, so now we're looking at the state level to see if the Department of Revenue has a deed. Um, if we can't find it, we can, we have a couple of choices. We can approach the county and ask them to give us the deed so we can follow through with the sale. Um, or we can just give the county back their school. So we have options. We're still working on it. Um, it's been really super fun, so. So there's your update on this.
So no estimated time of closing until we get that.
We can't, we can't sell something that's technically not ours, and according to the deeds we have, our name's not on it, but according to everyone else, we are the technical owner. So.
Okay.
Makes me think there's a missing document, because I don't know why everyone would have us listed as the owner. But who knows? Maybe it was just one cleric lawyer that flowed through too, so.
Okay.
We're still looking and researching, but we can't do anything until we get that cleared up.
It would just be easier to try to get a refund from the city for all of the things you take.
You know, you're on to something over there.
The county.
The county. You're on to something.
So we have a, Mr.
Or we call it over their heads.
Mr. Ed Joyner, I'll call him here. But I'm going to keep working on that, and I'll just keep everybody updated as we go, but that's where we act.
So, I, did he take possession of the building, though?
No.
Oh, he told me you're a Colstrip owner.
No, and we can't, and I was asked if, you know, if we do find the document, would we be willing to let them in early, and I said, no, as an entity, we can't do that. We have to wait until we're closed and done. But I did see a porta potty outside of that building, and I'm not sure why it's there, so I'm just going to ask about that. Who knows why?
I try not to talk.
Outside of Isabelbills, but I'll ask one. Who knows?
I have to hide to even go golfing.
Thank you, Sabrina.
Yeah.
Uh, last one at least, ten point oh two, administrative reports.
No one really added any on this month, but we'd add an overachiever, so I said, go ahead and put it in here.
It was on my calendar by the way, would you say? But I'm just going to stay here.
It's a recurring event on everybody's calendar.
Yeah.
July, you're exempt from that one.
I have a slot. Um, number obviously is blank by. We have eight certified openings. Actually, that's seven now, because you're pre by math teacher.
Yeah.
Um, and English should come, it is still on there because we don't have a PE teacher, and because that was an option. Um, history teacher, we have made an offer. We are waiting for background check, fingerprints, all that to come back from testing. Uh, we actually did an interview today for an industrial arts teacher. Um, I have gotten hold of two of his references, and we'll hopefully get a hold of their one tomorrow. Um, and then I think we will have a recommendation there, which is exciting. Um, but I'm, I'm a bit of a panic attack over all of the stuff in the shop, so I'm not sure where we're going to put that. Um, we also did a PE interview this afternoon, um, and I haven't been able to reach any of his references yet. I only had like half an hour, so I'll work on that again tomorrow. Um, but was a great candidate again, so. Tara Lyon is being transferred from Pine Butte to CHS to teach science. I did the OPI job there, I think it was actually three weeks ago. Um, was contacted by over forty teachers. Two of them had citizenship. It's the same time. So the rest. Um, so the rest needed J-one visas and most of them did not yet have them, they needed a sponsor. Um, but I, I have told them they were welcome to apply and I haven't seen any applications, so. Uh, handbooks, we're still working on revisions, corrections. Um, we're again student and athletic handbooks, make sure they align. Um, I'll be in the office a couple of days this week and then I am out from July eleventh to the twenty-ninth. And I will not answer my. Yeah, I won't answer.
Thank you, Robin.
May I ask a follow-up question?
Sure.
Brother, with a new IA teacher, um, whenever you get a chance, if you let me know what you might, if we need tech-wise out there. We still have the old laptops for high school tech, but if we need the.
We had that conversation today about AutoCAD.
Yeah, I'll look at that, updated.
And so he has used the AutoCAD program, but I think the last couple of teachers, anyway, we talked about had, from the former tech person, had been encouraged to use the free version of something, I don't know. Anyway, my, my answer was we won't schedule that class for first semester, we would schedule it for second semester. It was kind of figured out.
And then one other comment, just with the new teachers, I, I didn't follow up with you a few weeks ago. You'd asked about applicants from the Philippines having trouble getting to our website. Just where everyone's been. And I did check with our website provider and they do block, um, a lot of international nations from accessing the website. It's a security concern. And they can allow certain countries into it, but they have to have, uh, information that would be really difficult to get from anybody who's just visiting the website for one time. So there might be somewhere around it that we can suggest people try if they're coming from out of country. But that, that is just a security feature through the website provider.
Thank you, I can't just explain. I had two or three of those people that were online try to access the website while we were chatting on the chat box and they couldn't get it to open. And we're getting an error message or a block message, so I asked them. Thank you.
So do you have any ideas where you're going to put all that stuff?
Not one. Well, no, I do have an idea, but, um, we need to start a new obsolete list. And there's some things that need to go on it. And then, um, there's some of those things that will get dispersed through an obsolete sale. Um, like one of the big things in there is the new air purifiers and then the old air purifiers. So we get those on the obsolete list and sell the old ones and then we'll have them start putting the new ones in classrooms. So that'll take care of part of it. Um, we do have the two classrooms up here that would be a temporary fix, but I'd like to try to obsolete it before we move it there and if it's stuck there in the past now. I have a few ideas.
Okay. You good?
He has been here and seen it, so he knows. A lot of work in hell, I got a heart attack when he called me and said he wanted me to.
Yeah.